I call to order the April 23, 2018. Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Ed, regular meeting of Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby. Mr. Messer.
Present.
President.
Mr. Timmons.
Present.
President Jones.
Here. Thank you and welcome back, Ms. Wagner. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, April 16, 2018, and the business meeting, April 16, 2018.
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Bates, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present the April 19, 2018 Policy Committee meeting report. And I just wanted to relay this, that you are presenting an action item as well.
Yes.
And we also have that on Board Matters. So maybe a good way, a different way to approach that is, we're going to have discussion as you read your minutes about that. That way that might, we might be able to eliminate from the Board Matters agenda.
Well, it's a little, the discussion will be a little bit different in Board Matters.
Okay.
First, we have to approve the charter and then we move towards the appointments. And Board Matters is going to be a discussion of the appointment process and for, for the committee. But we're, but first, we have to approve the charter of the committee before we can move to appointments. So I want to approve the charter during the accept, the approval of the minutes and then during Board Matters, discuss appointments.
Okay, I wasn't aware that, okay, that's fine. I just, so as you're reporting on the minutes, the meat of the discussion will happen at that point. Is that correct? And then you'll move on.
The discussion around the charter itself.
Okay.
Will happen now.
Okay, I got you.
But the appointments later.
Got you.
Okay, if that's the pleasure of the Board. I think we need the charter approved before we can move forward.
Okay, we'll go forward. Thank you.
That's, that's just kind of how I had it planned in my mind.
That's, that's okay.
All right, so we have worked on this charter for recommendations and for responsibilities and charters for the Board's new committee. And we're bringing this forward to the Board for approval and this will require a vote. The only thing, and this we can discuss later too, but I want to make aware, we don't have the process for the appointment of those outside of the Board members in this charter. But the recommendation I'm going to make later is to mirror the same procedure as we have for the Audit Committee members. I don't know that it has to be in the policy, but let's be consistent with the way we appoint outside of the Board members. I think that would be a clean and easy way to do it, except that we're going to have to start moving right away and not wait until January. That would be the exception for the first year. So we would make it a year and a half term, the first year, and then, you know, move forward. So for Board action, I would like to move that you accept the, adopt the charter for the Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee, and I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded that we accept the charter. Any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
On the charter for the planning, is that what, the strategic communication, engagement and planning, I think since we're getting kind of a couple of months late start on it, I think in the, it says that the strategic plan will be done by the beginning of the coming school, the school year 1819. And since we're already at April, even towards the end of April, I would suggest that perhaps we might want to change just that date to be maybe October 1st so that it, we'd have a couple more months, but more particularly, we'd have enough time that it could impact the five-year forecast. But beyond that, I'm very supportive of everything else there.
Are you, I, for me, clarification, you talking about October of this year?
October, yes.
October 19.
2019, so that it's ready for the, the school year 1819, but more particularly, ready for the five-year forecast, so it can inform the five-year forecast by October 1st.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, so the, the charter does say 2019, 2020. So is there like a, is there like phase one, which would be then the October, things that would inform the five-year forecast, and then a full comprehensive strategic plan done by then, the 2019, 2020 school year?
I think that that would be helpful. Particularly too, we want to make sure, I think, I think the Board feels this way, that we also don't want to hold the Superintendent, the Administration, the Board, the District in some sort of, you know, abeyance, if you will, saying, so we want them to have some sense of something's going forward early. And, and a lot of this, I think, will probably impact the whole ESAP piece, which is already in place in the state and, and stuff that we've worked on. And we know that the Superintendent's been checking out other strategic planning possibilities, not just for education, but for other, so I think that way we get something that's a forward movement.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I do have one or a couple. And I think, I appreciate, Ms. Bates, that you're clarifying kind of how you had it in your mind, because I had it a totally different way, but it's okay. I have been 100% in favor of this committee, which I want to say grew out of the work that ad hoc, that Ms. Bolton and Elisa Hoffman and I worked on. And we had a lot of conversation about this committee in our January retreat. So again, 100% in favor. So in thinking about this, there's a couple of things that I wanted just to bring to the table that I have concerns about. And it's not about the language, it's not about the process, although I have some recommendations for that. But this is an, this is a critical topic area that everybody on this Board is fully committed to and everybody on this Board wanted to be a part of. I think the problem with this, when we start talking about appointments, is that, and I don't mean appointments, I mean Board representation, is that if we call it a committee, and I know we talked about this before, but if we call it a committee, then only three Board members can serve. There were five Board members that signed up for the committee and there's a, there's probably one, I'm trying to think, Mr. Timmons approached me expressing interest about being the sixth member, and then I, although I didn't sign up for it, felt the need to be very close to this. So again, we have seven people who are very close to it. And I just believe that there's going to be a challenge trying to figure out who's going to be willing to drop off of this committee if we leave it as three. So as I was thinking about this, my thought was, is there a way for us to consider the possibility of how we include this as full Board work? And not, and you know, not call it so much a committee, but more of a task force. So in my head, when I think about strategic initiatives, I think about full Board participation and something that is so critically important, and maybe perhaps with an outside facilitator. Now however we go on that, I'm going to support it, but I, I think the biggest challenge in, in this process is going to be, how do we select three Board members? So I don't know if people have any comments about that or concerns. I'm a little hesitant, because when you said appointments, are you talking about appointments from the broader community?
From, from, appointments for the, from the Board is, is immediacy, from the unions and from the general community would be the process we use for the Audit Committee members.
Mr. Morosky.
So you'll note on page two, and for the good of folks watching at home or in the audience that may not have this, the total composition of the committee would be 12 people, four members representing CPS Collective Bargaining Unit reps, and five community members appointed by the Board of Ed, to which Melanie alluded. So this, those would be the folks that would go through the same process as Audit Committee. So regarding the three members, it's no secret that I've been interested in this committee from the very beginning. I've also made it known here that I would be willing to step aside, much to Member Bolton's chagrin, we talked about this, but I, having started a brand-new job today and having this daunting task being done by October, I'm just using that as an example of my willingness to negotiate, because I think this should be a committee. I don't think it should be a task force. Task forces descend into talk forces very quickly. And I think it needs to be more focused. I think it needs to be three people. I, for one, am comfortable with all six of my colleagues. And yes, it will be difficult, but I think it's important and I think it's worth being difficult to get it to three folks. And as Member Bolton and Bates said quite a bit in our Policy Committee, you know, everybody's always welcome to come. People can always be there and be a part of this. But I think it, if we're serious about it, I think it should be a committee, a real committee of the Board and have three members.
Mr. Messer?
Yes, and I will add to that, I did also speak a lot to this, the need of a document like this, even last year as I was attempting to earn the seat that I did. So I do think that it is something that is desperately needed for the district, by the district, all the above. And I will just say, having had experience in running a process of a strategic plan in my day job, I do believe it has to be a dedicated group of people who are committed to the process and to the product and committed to a timeline, et cetera. And, you know, so is not to hold up the process. I too would be willing to withdraw my name to further it to, just to get it moving, because I feel like we all agreed to it in January and here we are about ready to knock on May's door and we haven't done anything with it. So I would like to see this move forward and happy to remove my name if that gets the conversation started.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and also, I mean, I'm, I would love to participate in this as well, but the reality is, this is going to be done over the summer with vacations, if we are even going to come close to the beginning of the school year. And to try to get all seven members of the Board with jobs, with family obligations, with vacations during the summer, it's just not going to happen. I mean, just, there's, we're not going to be able to coordinate that. We, we've done it for some Superintendent searches and, and very urgent types of situations, but again, I'm comfortable attending when I can, but letting a, a group of Board members, along with members of the community and the unions, make the commitment to do that, because right now, you know, I'm not sure that all of us are going to, I think all of us would make the commitment, but all of us aren't going to coordinate our vacations with everyone else and courses and conferences and everything that people do in the summertime.
Okay, so I'm not sure what you're saying about yourself.
The three. Well, I do not have to be one of the three.
Okay.
I will attend as I can.
Okay, I got you. Ms. Bolton?
I'm still interested in being on the committee and would look forward to it. I was one of the people that really thought it could be with the larger group, but everybody's kind of pointed out some of the issues that that entails, just logistically, as to where people are right now in the planning. I do think that these meetings do have to probably, in all likelihood, for the most part, be held after hours, because they involve the community. So you're looking at more evening kind of arrangements and obviously almost have a whole timeline for the first several months or the first six months of what it would look like. So I'm interested in serving, but I would also suggest that we really do need to ramp up the appointment piece so that we have those people in place and can create a timeline and then also anticipate and tell people that they would be, these would be evening meetings for the most part.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Timmons, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you were one of those people who, after the organizational meeting, when it was still in concept.
Right.
Who expressed an interest in being a part of this committee. So I don't know if you've been thinking about that or?
Right now, I have a lot on my plate, some things that came up after, you know, the fact, so.
Okay.
Believe I'm gonna just.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Messer?
That being the case, then if there're not three, I would like to do it. You know, I think if, if for no other reason, just in the fact that I do believe that there are some basic processes that I have used in my day job that would be applicable here, it's a fairly standard project plan, we would just insert what this district would be doing versus a, a business organization. But if there aren't three, then I would obviously be happy to serve.
I, I do want to say that Ms. Copeland-Dansby did sign up for that committee, and as you all know, she did write her notes in her, in apps, being absent tonight, and she would comprise the third member. She would comprise the third member, you know, given what you just said. And I can come, I'm like you, I can come ex officio, so certainly could be a part of that.
Yeah, because we're talking, I think too, it's again, using a previous Board members' phrase, kind of using everyone's gifts, as this is such a huge effort and it has such a full spectrum of interests, it, you know, that's another reason why it has to be pretty well organized, so that we have the right Board members at the right meetings, so to speak, knowing what everybody's interests are and what their expertise is and, because we all have those particular things that, you know, we trust one another's view or defer to one another on those issues. So I think that if we have three, then we have three, but we'll get it highly organized and we'll, it'll, of course, it'll be not only a full Board, but certainly full Board, District and Community product that'll be produced. And the Administration's really going to have to be very much involved, and if there's a part of this that needs further fleshing out, it might be the Administration's role as to how they want to proceed with it too, because right now, it's, there's, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have as many administrative folks that probably would have to be working on this.
Okay, thank you. So it just, I think we did clarify what that looks like. So I'm clear about it in my head, sounds like everybody is pretty, is committed still and, and we may approach this differently. So my suggestions would be, I've heard some other folks, some folks say, there are some things that I would suggest be added or have it revised. One is to include the phases, like the phases to get us to the five-year forecast. Mrs. Bates talked about parallel, paralleling this with the Audit Committee activity and how we appoint, so that could be written in there. And then also, we got to make sure that we're consistent with the name of the committee, because it was written in the minutes a little bit differently than what we're calling it. So just so we don't have to go back and revise it, so that would be my suggestion. So Ms. Bates, you want to continue with your presentation?
Yes, so I, so I believe we should, I believe we should just keep it simple, Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee, and amend the minutes to reflect that. Also, I don't think we have to add the process for appointment in here in the policy, but that could be one of the procedures.
Okay. As long as it's clear that we, I mean, I think it needs to be clear.
Have a process.
That we have a process, if, even some simple language around that, that we're modeling the Audit Committee or something, I don't know. It doesn't have to be in that great detail.
Okay, we could say five community members appointed by the Board of Education in a...
In a manner similar to Audit?
In a manner consistent with the Audit.
Existing practices.
With existing practices of other committees that include community members. Got that, fellas? Okay, so we're adding that under, after five community members appointed by the Board of Education.
Okay, great.
So with those revisions, as long as the secondar agrees, I would be willing to move forward with this charter.
With this charter. So we, is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
There was, we were discussing, I said, yeah.
And you're okay with the revisions?
We had discussions. Yes. Ms., Ms. Wagner?
Just for clarity, so the motion was to accept the charter of the...
Adopt the charter.
Of the Strategic Planning Engagement Committee.
Uh huh.
Okay.
And add it to our bylaws. It's not ad hoc, it's a committee that we're forming.
Right. But you're not appointing the members tonight, or are you?
Yes.
She's gonna do that.
For a motion?
Well, this was part of your minutes, so...
But it's for Board action, so.
Okay.
We, we, it's not, it's not always typical, but it's not unusual to vote Board action coming out of committee.
That's fine, we'll, we'll vote on the charter.
We could do that as a sep, we could do the charter and then we can vote on the appointments afterwards. I can make that motion.
We gotta vote on the minutes.
Well.
Present your minutes.
First, well, first.
We're voting, I mean, we're voting on this.
We're voting on the charter.
On the charter, then you have to present your minutes. We're at minutes.
Right, then I have another action item to vote on.
On, in, under Board Matters?
No, under these minutes.
Okay, got you.
Preschool Workforce Council.
So.
Okay. So we're gonna vote, was the motion is seconded that we adopt the charter and add it to our bylaws around the Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee? It's been motioned and seconded. Discussion, we need a roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Outgoing question.
Sorry, just on that phase piece, can that be viewed as a, a procedure too, where we make a commit, so we don't have to change the language, the phase, with the first phase being completed by October 1 of 2018? I don't think that that has to be in the charter, but if we make that kind of commitment, then that will be, that will be good. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, continuing with the minutes, I have another item for Board action, and we're bringing to you our, actually, it's not the draft committee work plan, it's the committee work plan. I would strike the word draft. And what we have done here in requesting approval is that all of our policies are now on a three-year rotation for review, so that they don't become stale or, you know, they're, they're not pertinent any longer and they need updating, whatever. We're going to review every policy, a minimum of every three years, in addition to those that are required by changes in legislation and just, you know, situations that occur during, during our, our work. So I would like to propose adoption of the Policy Committee work plan for the 2018 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Yeah, I think the only, I guess takeaway for me then, it probably would be good practice then to get those finance policies into the finance work plan in that three-year rotation as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, and then they would come to us, so it would have to be prior to this, this calendar. So we'll rely on Ms. Wagner to make sure that they're appropriately placed on the agenda.
Yep. Other questions, comments, discussion? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
And continuing, for your information, you will be receiving policies that have been reviewed and are being recommended by the Policy Committee for adoption, 5136, 7500, 7500.01, 9140, and 9210. So we ask that you review those and come prepared to vote on the 7th. There are some that we will continue reviewing that are not quite ready to bring to you. And I think the rest are fairly, oh, this other item may be for Board, for Board review. There has been a change in the graduation requirements. Dr. Amat came to us and asked if we could discuss this. There are 12 students that fall within this kind of a glitch in the law. They are required to retake a test, not pass it, retake it, because they did not pass it the first time. It's kind of a formality that they're being, they don't, the requirement isn't that they pass it. They will be taking the test after graduation. The question is, should we allow them to walk? And I know that this Policy Committee felt very strongly that if we were to do that, if the Board were to allow these students to walk, that their parents would have to sign an agreement that they will have their child take this test, or else they'll be counted as dropouts. That's always been the rationale behind not letting kids walk if they're taking a test that they need to pass in the summer. They don't have to pass this test, but we still need them to take it so that they're officially graduated. If they don't take it, then they're counted as a dropout. So that's the requirement, that their parents will have to agree in writing that their child will take this test. We didn't have a recommendation, we just received this information from Dr. Amat over the weekend, I believe it was. So this is something for Board review, if the Administration wants to bring that forward.
Yes, so there is a requirement that the students take the test, just as Board Member Bates has indicated. And since they're not required to actually pass the assessment, the Administration didn't really think it would be a good idea to, to keep them from walking and being able to graduate. We could always give them their actual official diploma after they come, take the test.
So you're not asking for action on that tonight?
No, that, I would think, since it's a waiver from our policy, that would have to be a resolution as, you know.
To accept the move.
To accept a waiver or to, to bring forward a waiver for these 12 students, provided that their parents sign an agreement that their child will take the test.
I'm Chair.
Yes.
I think Member Bates has framed that absolutely correctly, and I think it's, I think we felt strongly it would be great to have the kids be able to participate in the ceremony. And passing a waiver is required, because it's policy that we'd have to be changing, but the Administration would need to know that there's not going to be a close vote on it, I mean, so they could almost proceed, knowing that that's what we're going to be doing, but we procedurally have to do something, but substantively, we're there. I would, that's my sense from both committee and, and knowing y'all.
As long as the parent signs that agreement.
That's right, yeah.
Sign.
Ms. Bates, any, any other report?
I present these minutes for acceptance.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, as Chair of the Student Achievement Committee, please present the April 19, 2018 Student Achievement Meeting Report, and I believe you also have an action item?
Yes, I have an action item from our committee over the last two months, and, and really want to thank Laura Sang Regret for helping get this through as well in the Workforce Council, which is a part of the whole preschool effort. But you'll see on the minutes from Student Achievement, there's the Workforce Council Charter revision. The revision is really quite simple. Initially, when we first adopted this... Initially, when we first adopted this council and its charter, all of the preschool items went to finance. And as the Workforce Council piece has developed, there are both policy issues that come before the workforce, and indeed, we've seen some of that, and also, there are HR and instructional pieces that come from the preschool experience. So what this council charter does is, under the reportage section, reporting responsibilities, report regularly to the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education. And I would also remind people that the Workforce Council reports directly to the school board. It does not necessarily report to the Preschool Promise Community Board, but certainly shares that information and what have you, but including to the relevant committees, finance, policy, and student activities, and probably should be, if we can get the typo changed, it's a student achievement, and the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Board of Managers about council activities, issues, and related recommendations. So all this does is have relevant data, relevant reporting, relevant issues going to the relevant school board standing committees. And although it is, it might create some more work for more folks, almost none of those things could pass only through finance anyway. So that's, that's the revision. And we urge adoption of that revision with that change being student achievement instead of student activities in the proposed charter.
Okay. Ms. Bolton is putting forward a motion to adopt the revised Pres- Workforce Council Charter revision. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you.
Madam President, sorry.
Mr. Morosky?
I had raised my hand during policy, and it probably was more pertinent, so I apologize. Is it not prudent to, if I were to want to move to create this committee tonight of Erica, Ryan, and Eve, can we not do that right now?
Board matters.
We're gonna do it under board matters.
Okay.
Yeah. That was my initial question to her, where we were gonna do that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, though. Yes. Mr. Messer, as Chair of Finance Committee-
Oh, I have a question, we didn't-
I'll have to do my minutes.
Yeah, and I have a question on the minutes when she's finished.
I didn't do my student achievement minutes yet.
Oh, I thought we were just, we just voted. Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, we just voted on that one thing.
You're just confusing me tonight. It's on purpose, yeah.
Well, this, all these action items, or whatever. So I'll do this as quickly as we can. Ever since Mr. Messer, Chairman Messer, said how many people he had attending Finance Committee three months ago, we've been doing the best we can to beat you, and have even more folks come to Student Achievement. And I think this last time, we did. So I appreciate the support and interest out there. We're first, we talked about Workforce Council, we did that, as we just did. We also are charged with the responsibility of developing a new evaluation tool for our superintendent, as we introduce that process, and want to have that in place by June 1st for our superintendent. And the committee and/or representatives of the committee will meet with the superintendent and work on it, as we did with, in finance, with the treasurer, so that it's reflective of their work and their interest in their, because they have higher standards, probably, we know of our superintendent and our treasurer than we could ever make for them. So we want to get their input. Curricular review, very excited, and I know, Ms. Bates, this is very exciting and historic, but Assistant Superintendent Amat and a whole number of folks presented presentations regarding instructional and curricular materials. Two areas, fine arts and social studies, will be up next month for, I think, adoption, and then be, meeting to be paid for. We also did some, followed the presentation on science curriculum, and then also heard a pretty interesting report regarding preschool enrollment, as well as preschool expansion and the K-12 waiting list, particularly at the magnets, and talked briefly, fortunately, with Assistant Superintendent Broadnax, about how do we make sure that we have folks understanding that this is their tax dollars at work? Also, how can we use our, our very, very storied and historical success at preschool as CPS to help rebrand CPS's, how shall I say it, image, especially as an instructional institution, since we have five stars and what have you? So it's something that was discussed. We also have had a work group, and we appreciate the community folks that have been doing this, revising the LSDMC handbook, and that work is virtually completed now. We have several policies that have to go through policy next month, but it'll make the print, and we appreciate Lauren Worley's work on that, as well as numbers of folks from different LSDMCs, and so have that being done. We had to brief a conversation regarding character and support guide and code of conduct, and board, I mean, committee members are kind of continuing to discuss things and submitted some ideas to the administration. And we'll be talking about that also next month at length. And then we, what we've been doing in our minutes as well, is kind of updating the things that have come before us before, so that we can kind of keep track of it. That's a thing that I think we've learned from our own board staff, as well as the superintendent and treasurer. So those are the items that are listed there. But we have attached a number of the reports, the curricular and instructional material presentation, we have the science presentation attached, as well as the preschool and the magnet waiting list. And I submit and thank my wonderful, wonderful committee members in the administration that keep coming to these meetings, and we're doing good stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, for your report.
I'm looking for it to be adopted, or whatever. Thank you.
We'll vote on the minutes later. Okay, Mr. Messer, as Chair of the Finance Committee, please present. Did you have a question?
Yeah, particularly about, a question and a comment about the waitlist, and-
Yeah, we did too, yeah.
I mean, it's apparent we need West Side seats, very, very badly. So that's, that's to be understood. The Fairview numbers, I'm assuming that everyone who is in that 100 and whatever, 226, that if they live within the CANS boundaries, that they have been notified that they will be accepted into CANS for preschool and/or kindergarten, particularly. I'm not sure, I know that they're, they've all been contacted, but are they being recruited for CANS?
So it looks like Ms. Worley just stepped out of the room. So we are doing some, we will be doing some, having recruiting for those parents. Board Member Messer and I attended a meeting with the CANS group just last week, and later on this week, they're going to be working with our staff to complete the key driver diagram around a whole recruitment strategy. And I know that Ms. Worley's office has been working on that as well. So to your answer, we will be working on that, yes.
And the other thing I wanted to, on the same topic, report to the board, because I don't believe I've done this, may discuss this publicly with the, with the full board, but Cheryl Broadnax and I met with the Director and Associate Director of the Cincinnati Recreation Commission to discuss collaborating with them and renting some of their facilities and renovating some of their rooms for our preschools, so we can gain some seats there. And what came out of that meeting is, and it came out in these minutes also, that there's a great need in Mount Airy, and there's a rec center up there that does have room during the day. The rec center doesn't use their, their capacity during the day. They use it, you know, for seniors in the morning, perhaps, and, and for after-school activities for the children who are in our schools. But during the day, many of their facilities have, you know, opportunity for us. And so they're very open to this. One thought is that we start with Mount Airy, and CRC is very serious about pursuing this. So that's an opportunity to expand preschool and maybe, you know, give a little bit of breathing room in that area.
Ms. Bolton?
Board members will recall that before the preschool promise vote took place, the previous city council had voted by majority to help us find city space within city buildings. And it was overruled at the time by the mayor, if I recall that vote. And I would assume, as we said in Student Achievement, I don't think that that kind of overruling would take place again, and that even beyond the recreation centers, and I've said about that, the recreation centers piece, there are a number of city buildings that council members at the time had sort of targeted, where indeed, we could be doing that, just as we do in some of the churches or what have you. So I would, I would suggest as a follow-up to what Member Bates has said, is that we pursue, because of her seat on the Recreation Commission, but also, I think we send a letter, perhaps, maybe it could be an assignment, but a letter to the city administration and all city council about the need for seeing if they have spaces available that they currently are not using. And I think that would be helpful, and again, show a little bit more of a partnership that we need to have. Because I know at Student Achievement, we hated that anybody was waiting, or that we were ever gonna turn anybody away. So we have to start seeing that in the budget, too, that we have no interest in turning people away.
Yes. Mr. Morosky?
I second those emotions, and I'm curious if we can maybe get this on our agenda for ACES.
That's, yeah.
Great.
That, yes, we can do that, get the agenda on ACES. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I would just say, there's also a tie here then to the Strategic Planning Committee, as you're looking for long-term capacity and exploring all opportunities that may or may not require brick and mortar of this district to maximize the dollars that we have available. So I think it's great discussion.
It's also, as Ms. Bates described, one of our priority areas is preschool expansion, and that specifically. So we're approaching it from all different angles here, which I think is good. So any other report from?
I'm included.
All right. I noticed that Ms. Worley came in.
Yeah, sure.
About preschool enrollment?
Specifically recruitment of the parents who live in the CANS attendance district who did not get into Fairview.
Yeah, so we, we're very excited to be working with the CANS Advisory Committee and other people throughout the administration on enrollment. And so we've, we've sent letters out to parents who have not gotten into, me and I have gotten into their first choice magnet school, to make sure that they know, not only in the CANS area, but throughout the district, that there's a great neighborhood school option, and what those options are. As we continue to work on our marketing for all of our schools, not just magnet schools or high schools, really helping to bolster the programming options through our marketing work with them. Specifically on, on CANS, we're also looking to do just some good old-fashioned shoe leather work in the community, particularly in Spring Grove Village and in Cuff. We've got a kind of a good crew there, working in Clifton, and we want to make sure to reflect the diversity of that neighborhood and that school. So from our school social work team, to our FSAs, to a very exciting partnership we'll be announcing soon with a corporate sponsor here, we're gonna be doing some work, just good old shoe leather, dropping lit, and reaching out to people to help them understand that they, where they can enroll there in Clifton.
Thank you. I do have a question. What will be the capacity at CANS?
Sorry, go ahead.
450. So when we had a conversation with the CANS families last week, when you run the numbers of each preschool classroom having 20 kids, and primary having 25, and intermediate having 30, then it, you can only have really two grade levels, two classes at each grade level, pre-K through six, which would put us at about 420.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Is your report completed? Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer, Chair of Finance, please give your April 19 report.
Yes, I will give some highlights. The Finance Committee had a, another very lively and fruitful conversation. Finance is fun. You know, a couple of things I want to point out, I know you've all read the report, you know, I think it was recommended that we prepare post-primary to connect with our gubernatorial candidates early and engage with them from our government relations team. We also have them doing some research and looking at the Big Eight, and coming back to us on what tax abatements look like in, in those districts as we prepare for 2019. And as they reported, which should be no surprise to us, the information's been very difficult to get, but they are tasked with bringing that back to us, so we have a foundation on, you know, what the norm is in that abatement issue. And then, of course, House Bill 512, which so many people are aware of, fortunately, we realized that, or were made aware that it is not something that's urgent, that they, they believe that this will likely fall during the lame duck session, but nevertheless, agree with the Finance Committee that we should submit a statement on behalf of the board, and you'll see that here in the minutes. So, let's see, a couple of other things that I wanted to point out. Specifically, we did meet with Ms. Levens and received an update on supplier diversity, and reinforced that this is an important focus that we want to keep with the Finance Committee in, in going forward. So we're gonna be working through establishing collective goals, and then regular and ongoing reporting, so we can show our progress in each of those measures. Also wanted to give a little shout-out, in our spirit of being fiscally responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, Ms. Wagner reported that this district should see about a $2 million in savings from the bond refinance, and as a result, that turned into three. So it was kind of a, an over-deliver on one of those, and in a direction that we'd like to report back to taxpayers, as being just fiscally responsible stewards of the dollars invested in the education of our children. That is my report for this month's finance meeting.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Messer? We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Okay, so this evening, I'm, we have a presentation, and Superintendent Mitchell will introduce our presenters.
Yes, so our HR Director Paul McDowell is going to provide a presentation on Recruiting for Stronger Tomorrow. This is really centered around a conversation that the board had a while ago regarding diversity in terms of recruitment, specifically as it relates to our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good evening, board members. Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner. I also wanted to introduce Kayla Rickles, who is in, the college manager for the district. She's gonna be sharing a portion of information that we're doing as well. So we're very glad to be here, very excited to provide some information to the board at a request of talking about the diversity of our talent pool. What I wanted to share first and foremost with, since we have some new board members involved with the district, wanted just to share some of the work that we do on an annual basis related to recruitment efforts within the district. So this year alone, we've had several different activities that we've taken part in as far as recruitment and thinking of the workforce that we represent as an employer. So I share with you some of the opportunities that we had this year, the first being the paraprofessional and substitute teacher job fair. That's an annual event we have, and many board members have heard us discuss this before. But again, for our new board members, I just wanted to share some of this work that we do. This was an opportunity to interview, provide offers on the spot, and start the onboarding process for these individuals to be employed to the district. to be employed to the district. Secondly, and this was our fourth annual, and I want to just give recognition to Julian Delatio, who's in the crowd. She has planned this event for now the last two years for the district. And I'm sorry, I skipped down one, the CPS teacher job fair. This is held annually at Woodward High School. This past year, we had over 400 teacher candidates. This is specifically related to teachers. And we often made job offers on the spot to 20 intervention specialists because that's where we had a high need as far as teachers for the following school year. I'm going to go back up one. This was also our second annual event. This was very exciting as well. Is, as we know, we're very fortunate that we have a large number of high-quality colleges right in our backyard. And what that means is they need our resources. They need to have opportunity to get into our schools. So the senior year, the experience, we have over 100 teachers typically working in our buildings throughout the year. This is a great opportunity to see them in the classroom. At that point, they're responsible for the classroom. They're driving the instruction with a teacher still there. But it's a great opportunity for us to observe the teachers functioning in that role. And so we started hosting a job fair just for those individuals. This past year, we had over 100 individuals attend that job fair. So we call that an internal experience that we have to support that great work that we've done and to also meet the needs of the individuals that we're hiring to the district. This year will be first annual on May the 11th. We're hosting what we're calling the CPS Experience. And this would be for, related to the teachers who we've made job offers to. We are going to host an event here. We're going to take them on a tour, a bus tour of the city of Cincinnati. We're going to take them to three schools where we will have staff, teachers there, principals there to meet with them, discuss with them. And then we're also inviting principals to be back here in the afternoon so that way they can meet these apple and kits as well. Great opportunity to connect those folks and give our new hires that personal touch feel that they really want. We are having a civil service recruiting fair in June. And then we started looking into some central office internships. ITM, HR, Treasurer's Office. This was actually an opportunity that was brought to us by our internal auditor Laura Roberts. And we assembled a team that we sent to both Xavier and UC to help support that work. And lastly, this was the piece that Ms. Bunty was going to speak to, the Principal and Assistant Principal Assessment. This is our second year of assessment. We have 41 individuals who have gone through that assessed process for either principal or assistant principal. And what we've changed this year is, in the past, what we have now is assistant principals and both principals that are going to interview with LSDMCs have been gone through our screening process. So before a principal goes to interview, they have gone through our process as we forward the information to the LSDMCs for interviewer selection. So I just wanted to share with you kind of some of the activities that we've done. These have been annual events that we focus on. But we want to dig a little bit deeper into the teacher complement. This past year, we hired over 400 employees new to the district, of which approximately 250 were teachers. So obviously, that's our largest hire pool when you look at that. So as we know, there is, we've been faced with a teacher shortage. It's a national teacher shortage. We're fortunate because of the relationship we have with our colleges. But we are also seeing, and if you look at the data with our college partners, the enrollment at the college level is not where it was. UC said they finally have stabilized their enrollment as far as enrollment to graduation, which is good news to hear. But that also has an impact on the recruitment related to diversity as well. As we know, we're focused on hiring diverse staff to meet the needs of our learners, our school buildings. So we've had some challenges in that area when you look at the overall pipelining that's coming from the college experience. So what we're going to focus on here, I've already touched on the bottom left bubble, the traditional pathways. But what Kayla's going to talk to us about are some of the non-traditional and partnerships that CPS has.
Yes, thank you. So when we think about our teacher pipeline, we know it has to start early. And the teaching profession is the single career that our students are most exposed to. And so as we think through this, we want to build a diverse pipeline in concert with our college partners so that we're better able to meet the needs and bring diversity into our own classrooms. And so as we approach this work, we had a partner come to the table, Miami University, that really wanted to think through, how might we increase this diversity in concert with the whole community? So not just Miami and CPS, but engaging the high school community and the community that surrounds the high schools in the district as we really answer this question. So through this academic year, we've had a diverse working group really thinking about how we can start small with this issue and really take on an opportunity to increase our diversity. So within the working group, we have central office staff, Aiken High School staff, Miami University admissions, Miami University College of Education, CFT, and community partners and families present at these meetings. So when you think about the components of this program, this academic year, we've taken the opportunity to plan deeply and really think about what we must do in order to build the pipeline early and pique the interest of our students. So starting next academic year at Aiken, we'll start an exposure and recruitment year of these students. So every eighth and ninth grader at Aiken High School will have the opportunity to learn deeply about the education profession and have exposure opportunities both to the profession and to Miami University with the intention of enrolling these students into academic programs the following year so that they can complete four education courses prior to enrollment at Miami University. Within this commitment, Miami would commit to full cost of attendance scholarships for these students annually so that they can move to Miami and have the full experience with the hopes that they'll move through the curriculum at Miami as well, graduate successfully and come back to CPS to teach within our own classrooms. So we're doing this on a two-year cohort basis. So we'll focus on the class of 2022 and 2023, starting very early. So that, we all know that this is a long game, but this is how we're going to increase our diversity across our classrooms, across our district. And we are also thinking through with other college partners how we can approach and think about other students across the district, not just Aiken students. So what can this look like if we think about Cincinnati State and Mount St. Joe and the University of Cincinnati to increase their own enrollment of diversity into their education program so that we can continue to reap the benefits of that?
So thank you. This is a great opportunity for our students that we just wanted to share that is being done. I'm going to go back to this visual here because Kayla talked to us about the non-traditional events and partnerships for CPS. We've talked about our traditional pathways. But I think what's really important and what we're most excited about is to grow our own opportunity, which is the bottom right corner. We have partnerships with University of Dayton, Mount St. Joe, Xavier and UC. University of Dayton and Mount St. Joe offer retraining opportunities at a discounted tuition rate, which is a great opportunity for our current employees. Great opportunity when you're thinking of diversity of recruitment and hiring. It allows an opportunity for our paraprofessionals to enter into those programs, our substitute teachers to enter into those programs. Great way to grow within the organization. We've had a deeper conversation with Xavier and UC recently. The challenge that we have, it's great that these programs have this, but when you look at the cost of the tuition, it's almost impossible for the individuals to enter into the program. When you think of a paraprofessional and the money that they make, we value them, we want them in our classroom. We have over 800 paraprofessionals that work in our district. It's a great opportunity to grow from within. But it's a big commitment to have them still working in that job, making the money that we're paying them and then still having to pay for the tuition on top of it. So we've had a bigger conversation with UC and Xavier about how can we come to the table to think of that cost? How can we support our employees in assuming some of that cost? On the April 30th, Strive has reached out to many different school districts. And they're bringing together a think tank to talk about this pipeline opportunity. And they're bringing together some business partners to talk about how could we potentially pay for this? About 15 years ago, there was a very similar program that was set by UC and Xavier that allowed employees, in this particular case, we used substitute teachers, went through an interview process, a selection process, and same for paras. Where it allowed the individuals who had an associate's degree or above to go back to be retrained to become a teacher and to get a teacher license. Our obligation was to employ them while they're doing it. And then there was grants involved that paid for the tuition. There was not $1 paid. It was a great opportunity to increase the number of teachers, the diversity of our teachers. And we really need to revisit that if we're serious about attempting to focus on the diversity of our teaching staff. It's a great opportunity to grow from within. So with that said, we do all this work because ultimately, we know we want to enhance the employee experience for the district. We want to diversify the employee complement of our employees that we're offering employment to, which end has great support, obviously, in our classrooms, which supports our students. So with that, we thank you for the opportunity. Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments? Ms. Bates?
No, I think this is great. I think you've done quite a bit of planning. What I, and what I would kind of like to add, because you're definitely looking at kind of a long time getting people into the pipeline. Millennials don't stay in jobs their entire career. There's, I'm sure, a large group of interested, you know, people in our community who are looking for a career jump or a career change that we could reach out to and maybe move into the program similar to the one that we have for the paraprofessionals. Even offering some internships in our schools to see if this is something that they might be interested in. And then on the other end of the spectrum, and I believe this program exists up in the Cleveland area. It's called Encore. And it's a program for people like my age who have finished their primary careers but are still interested in a career. Now, perhaps, you know, this would be a five to 10-year commitment, but that might be another way to get people interested in coming to our district a little more quickly because I know that, you know, I distributed that study that came out of Harvard that's so crucial that children of color experience at least one teacher of color. And that is a game changer for them. The statistics show that the graduation rate is so much higher when they have that experience. And I'm not sure we can wait till 2023 to experience that. I had a conversation with Gillian Darwish about this as well to kind of bounce ideas off her. And she's, you know, brainstorming. And she's also talking to some of the local universities to kind of come up with ways to fast-track more opportunities for minorities in our system. So just kind of letting you know that, I mean, my interest is very, very high in supporting you in this, but to encourage you to keep on planning because I believe that there are ways that we can, you know, get more interest from minorities in this field, you know, from millennials, from non-traditional students, from people who have retired from their primary career. Just, and there could be other opportunities out there that, you know, we just, we haven't really planned for or thought of yet.
So greatly appreciate the recommendation. And in fact, Gillian helped arrange a meeting for us with some of the partners that we currently work with at Xavier. Great conversation. They could start this immediately. The challenge that we have is, again, the cost related to the tuition. And if we want to be serious about it, I believe that, I think I'm hearing a very common message that we need to look into that avenue to, if we really want to be serious about offering this to our current employees or to a different group of potential employees. But I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Messer?
I too want to say thank you for the update and its important work that you're doing. I was recently made aware of a program called Future Teachers of America, which I'm sure you're well aware of. But what I thought was interesting about that was kind of in the spirit of intra-turnships, I think there's so many things here at CPS. Whether it's teaching or all the amazing things that are just part of what we do every day here at CPS, I think there's great opportunities there. And what I learned about this, Future Teachers of America, was, A, they're often mentored by somebody who is a teacher. And I think those are some of the most inspirational people I've ever run across. But then they are actually given task of helping younger children who may be struggling increase. So it kind of gives you this pay it forward where they're helping others achieve their skills and start to feel the benefits of seeing somebody progress step by step. So I was curious if we have anything like that up and running today? And then if there is any sort of, I was going to ask about the tuition reimbursement. Is there a succession planning process for people in various roles to say, we think, based on their performance and their demonstrated skill sets, we project them to be at least one level higher or two levels higher into a principal role? And then decisions made to invest in their education in that way?
Sure. Great questions. I'll answer your second question first. I don't want to take away the thunder of a presentation that Ms. Bunty's going to do to the board related to some of the great work that she's been doing. But part of that work is creating that succession planning. So we have a profile to say, Paul's here at this piece and we think he could advance to this piece with this type of assistance or training. So that is something that is definitely in a planning phase right now. So that way, it's a great way to support our employee complement. To your first question, so we have a couple of different resources currently within our district, one of which are called our Districtwide Mentors. So we have teachers that are out of classroom, meaning that they're not in a classroom environment. And their role is to assist new hire teachers throughout the district. We currently have five. And they're there to help mentor them, help build them, help guide them in that instruction and process. We also have, related to our traditional approach of student teachers in our building, we go through a process of identifying who those teachers should be that are working with our student teachers. So we have a application process, like I would like to be a mentor. We go through a screening process that involves the teacher and the team of teachers at that school. And that person is chosen to then be the support mentor for our student teachers that are in our buildings during their senior year of college.
So I'm talking long before that. I'm talking from the minute they may say, you know, someday I might want to be a teacher. And I think it would be at that point that would be great to start that, almost like Big Brothers and Big Sisters, big teachers and big paras or big principals, whatever, but pairing them up with somebody who can mentor them in their career. Just exploration before they would then go in to be student teacher and then, you know, potentially come back.
So at this point, we don't have anything formalized. However, we have been working with Strive Partnership and the University of Cincinnati to think through what this mentorship type of program could look like. CFT has taken on the task of pulling their own membership to even understand what teachers in our district are our own grown and who actually graduated from the district that can loop back and serve as mentors for those students. But then really thinking through who can be the champions in each building to this profession? And who are the cool teachers that the other students want to really be with and learn from so that we can start to uplift that? So I would say that's something that we hope to see get off the ground in the near future.
Ms. Bolton?
I think, Mr. Messer, okay. Several things. I think it's great we need to be doing it. I say some stuff I always say, so forgive me when I repeat myself. But I still think we need to be particularly looking, if we're talking in terms of diversity, at those colleges and universities nationwide that emphasize the urban educator. Because chances are that there's a comfort level there. And you'll also find a larger percentage of folks that might be part of the sort of more diversified pool. Also, it's been brought to my attention by a friend of mine who's doing similar work in Philadelphia. And they've found that a good pipeline is the recent international citizens that have now joined the United States. So people that are here as a result of moving to America. They are a diverse set of folks. And they usually have at least undergraduate degrees and often more than undergraduate degrees. And they're settling in the big cities rather than in some of the smaller areas. Another thing that they've worked on is, and you probably do this too, is work with the major corporations and the universities and the hospitals who have people move here to take a job and their spouse needs a job. So to keep that kind of there, I think, would be good. And the Future Teachers of America, yes. It's called a club at every school that you could have. And I think we should be doing it for future business leaders too. And it's a cheap investment to have a club for future teachers. And the kids could, you know, you find a teacher, like you said, some teacher that's kind of cool and they want to sponsor it. We should be growing our own as you guys are doing. But a cheap way of doing that, besides this wonderful place about Aiken and what you're going to be doing with Miami, is to maybe have a club like that in every one of our high schools. And I think business And I think business, future business folks, too. And then the other thing we always say is, and I know you do it, is the finding our coaches and our extracurricular people that enjoy working with kids and may already have an undergraduate degree, but they are really looking for a career. I mean, we need a list of those folks, because the ones that are really good, if you can, if you're a good coach, you're going to be a good teacher. But this is great, but grow our own is a good idea.
Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, Madam President. Awesome presentation. Thank you so much. Ms. Rickles, I was so happy to hear you say that out of all of the professions that our students see, they see teachers, and teaching more than any other profession. And something I've said for many, many years, from when I was a teacher to when I hired teachers, was that this diversity issue is really solved in the classroom in that, and Ms. Bolton's heard me say this, and Mr. Timmons in student achievement, until our kids all feel comfortable in a classroom when they're in it, they're never going to want to return to it. And so I really feel like the work that we do in student achievement and the work we're doing on the Discipline Guide is really part and parcel of what y'all are talking about. And unless those two things are talked about together, this doesn't matter. Because if our kids feel like they're singled out because of their race or whatever it is or their gender when they're in high school, they're never going to want to go back to high school. So when you said that, it really, really stuck out to me. And to that end, I feel that our equity policy, quite frankly, could be one of the best tools we have to increase our diversity. So thank you for your presentation. The thing I'll close with, and I was talking to Superintendent Mitchell about this Friday, and I know she's had same conversations as I have with Dr. Posey regarding Cincinnati State, and this kind of ties back to preschool, the opportunities, and I'm sure you've started this, and if not, I'd love to be helpful in any way I can, of our students potentially getting a CDA in high school and then writing to an ECE program, right into Cincy State. So this is really cool, anyway, that I can be helpful, whatever that means, please let me know, but just know that I see my work on the Student Achievement Committee as being part and parcel of this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes. That was a nice presentation. I'm a former school teacher myself, and in fact, I had a student teacher with me for one quarter, and he was liking, you know, the methods that I was using, and he saw the relationship that I had with other teachers, too. And that was one of the things that he said, you know, he liked, you know, my approach, and I was always open for helping other teachers or what have you. But I just liked the fact that you guys have this program where you can let a teacher be on-the-job training, where you're going to pay them, too, because they don't want to stay in that position, you know, getting that type of money. They want teacher money. And, yeah, but I just thought that was a good presentation, you know.
Thank you.
So maybe to close it out, I'll just invite and encourage our newer board members to participate in one of these fairs. I didn't know what to expect the two years that I went, but I found it very helpful to be exposed to the kind of activity and the interaction between the schools and the people who were representing CPS and talking to the folks who were participating. And both of the events that I attended were held at Woodward, and it was packed, you couldn't get a parking spot, kind of thing. And I made it a point of talking to some of the participants, and a lot of them were scared, you know? I mean, I guess that would be normal, but they were really afraid, and some of them were afraid of failing and not being accepted and whatever, but I would say to people, you know, it's always an opportunity to get your feet wet, and don't be afraid to ask the hard questions and all of that. And, you know, a lot of them did. A few of them who I knew personally were hired, and so they have been very happy with that, but it was just an eye-opening experience. And I won't add to what everybody else has said, but just a quick question around extending, I think Ms. Bolton said, extending beyond just the immediate geographic area, but there are a number of black colleges that are around, and I don't know if you've reached out to those colleges or what.
We have. We've done, we do physical visits, and we do online presence as far as those throughout. In fact, Julie is leaving tonight to go to Indiana for another recruiting trip. So this is actually our last one this season, correct? Yes.
And I also just wanted to say, in the black community, non-traditional is real non-traditional. You go to the churches, you go to the fraternities and sororities, there's a lot more boots on the ground, but it works. People talk and they spread it, you know, so the more we can do that, if we can, you know, you go to the churches and things like that. And I don't mean whole, big old fairs, but information and contact, who do I contact kinds of stuff would be, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Any more presentations? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to our agenda item on Board Matters, and if the board members don't mind, I'm going to switch those items so we can address the Board Matters subject on the Strategic Planning and Engagement Process, Ms. Bates. You wanted to discuss the appointments?
Yeah.
We did that, but do we need any further discussion or vote on it?
I think we need to vote on that, just as we do at our organizational meeting.
Okay.
So I would like to make the motion that this board appoint Ryan Messer and Eve Bolton and Erica Copeland Dansby to the Engagement, or Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee.
It's been motion that we appoint, it's been motion that we appoint the three folks. Did we get the right ones? Yes, hold on, we want to make sure. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah.
Mr. Messer? And Erica Copeland Dansby.
Correct.
Right. There you go. It's been motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
I'm sorry, Ms. Who's the second?
Mr. Messer?
No.
Ms. Bolton?
I thought it was Mr. Morosky was the second.
Oh, I seconded it. I seconded the motion.
We thought you were talking about the second person.
I seconded the motion.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Do you have a question? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. So move.
And I have continued discussion on the same topic.
Okay.
That we, that this board, and not to separate it into yet another category assignments, but we need to make the assignment to, I would think, well, to the administration, to solicit the community via website, via Facebook, via our typical means for candidates to fill the five community positions following the procedures set out for our community members who currently serve on the Audit Committee.
Can we ask you to make sure that gets in the assignment category, in the assignment item?
Do we have to do it then? Can't we just do it now?
You're usually the stickler for all this. You're usually the one that...
Right.
I can do it during assignment. I'll do it during assignment.
So that we can, just so we keep it all together. Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
You're confusing me.
Okay, any other conversation about that agenda item? Okay, so we're going to move to the discussion on the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, and this was, if you remember, Superintendent Mitchell filled in for the Budget Retreat Report, and there were lots of comments and questions and what have you at that, on that day. I think the intent here is so we can really, again, begin to formulate some way of framing all of this so that it's easier for administration to follow up and do whatever we're asking them to do. I think, I just hope that people keep in mind that if we ask questions that Jen particularly hasn't had a chance to think about, because she's been out for a while, we just need to be considerate of that, and it might flow into an assignment at some point. So what we want to do is just open the floor for discussions, suggestions, and questions, and we're looking at Ms. Davis and hoping she will be, and knowing that she'll be able to capture the things that we're asking about this particular subject matter. And I also have a few of the concerns and questions that Ms. Copeland Dansby submitted, but rather than read them, I'm going to make sure that you all have this so we don't have to repeat those. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and as the, as a freshman member of the board, you know, one thing that I thought about as we were having that presentation at the previous meeting was, is there something that we could model after perhaps City Council or other bodies where they do hearings in Finance Committee, kind of over a period of time, where there are many hearings on the budget and a much more conducive environment for discussion and questions that then allows the administration to then go off and prepare the answers and then approach the full board with something that has at least been vetted, as we do with many of our other actions of the board. So that's more of just kind of a procedural question on perhaps how we could make it a little bit more manageable in the future.
You're talking the presentation of itself.
Yeah, the process for budget, yeah.
Gotcha.
And then, and one more thing if I could add, I just, I think, too, then in future state, when you have a strategic plan that the board has, then the idea would, at least my opinion would be that you would have an annual business plan that ladders to achievement of the strategic plan by the administration, so what they plan to do in the one year that ladders to that strategic plan, and then, once those ideas are presented, then you would then attach the financial piece and then be able to have real conversations on trade-offs, et cetera. And I think we'll get there with the strategic plan and tying that all together, but perhaps that's also a way to look long-term on how we manage it going forward.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
I think everybody knows that I've always been dissatisfied with our process regarding budget. I mean, that's my, one of my many Eve One Notes, largely because it does not include the community in a way that I think would be helpful. We really don't have hearings about the budget. We have presentations. There really isn't an opportunity for people within the district to say, could you please come, we'd like you to spend more on Montessori, or could you possibly think in terms of this or that? We don't open ourselves up for that, to the degree that I think we should do it. I know that both the superintendent and the treasurer are interested in having a better process. This wasn't exactly the year that we could do it, but I do think that we should, as a whole board, because I said almost the exact thing that you did, and Melanie, as I recall in Room 1A, slapped me down right away, because this budget is full board, because I was saying, whoa, it's Finance Committee, whatever. And so I think that we do need community hearings. I feel strongly about that. I also don't think that the institution itself, the bureaucracy itself, it has a channel and a hierarchy so that we don't hear from schools. Schools get kind of shut down, and I understand why, by their principal, whoever, oh, don't come and complain, or don't say you're not getting this. So we are very limited as a board with this major responsibility, which is our number-one responsibility is having enough money to do this, run the place, okay? We're very limited as to who tells us what there is and isn't. And fortunately, we can trust the people that are telling us, but that's not always going to be the case. So I do think that we should have more community hearings as such, and participation, and not just doing the levy kind of experience. I don't know that it should be rooted in finance or the whole board. I'm kind of liking what we're doing now under President Jones, where we're actually doing board work in front of everybody, because we've had a couple of years where we weren't doing that necessarily. It was a presentation, oh, that's nice, and then sit down and whatever. So I think you could work into, looking at ad hoc work, you could work in more opportunities to do more budget work if we wanted to, and I think to Mr. Messer's point, we should. I have a whole list of things that I think, you know, I want to know if we're spending money on, and I'm willing to submit that to everybody and talk about it and get answers, but the biggest problem is that we are very limited as to who's telling us how much money there is. And the other unfortunate thing, although it's a good idea about pooling, once we pool the funds, it's like having multiple tests, that we can't find the trend line, because , you know, the first five years, let's say, we had, I think we had pooling, and then we didn't have pooling or whatever, but, and now we do have pooling, and it makes fiscal, it's sense, it's sensible, but I can't follow that line item. I can't see and compare, you know, we don't have the big blue books or whatever those were, you know. There's things, in short, we need more information than we get, and we need to have them from multiple sources in order to help. And I think also, the administration holds very dear and near the budget process, and I think that's typical of any organization. But I think as elected folks, we need to, we need to have more sources of information.
Mr. Messer?
You know, and I think the, I think there is confusion in calling it the budget process.
Yeah.
I think it is an annual planning process, and then you tie the budget dollars as part of a conversation. I think you put out a 2018-2019 annual plan that ladders to the strategic plan, which we don't have, but I think what we saw was a general 2018-2019 plan, but then I think the budget part comes to say, this is what this is going to cost, and then if you add, then you have to either subtract over here or do something different over here. So, I mean, I think that just renaming the process into an annual planning process that then has a budget portion after, or as a underneath piece, is important. I also think that in looking at the dollars that this board is ultimately responsible for and the administration, it's a lot of money. I think taxpayers probably are now more aware than ever of those dollars that are being spent today in education and probably will continue to be so, as we talked about abatements and all those types of things. I would propose that in the annual budgeting process, and we talked about this a little bit at the Finance Committee, there are a certain number of fixed costs, buildings and grounds, things like that, these are absolutes, these are not even on the table, these are just the cost of doing business. And then I think you have the salaries that are all tied to projected numbers of students, et cetera, those are generally off the table. And I think when you start to really classify the dollars in those ways, you realize it's a much smaller pool of money that's actually now in question, and then being able to look at those, I think it would really help to focus the conversation. And then to the point of engaging the public, I too agree that that is an important thing, and it's not that there haven't been efforts to do that, it's just that nobody's shown up in the past. And one idea shared was, what if we pulled out a sum of dollars and said, this is on the table for teachers, students, parents to come forward with ideas on what they would do with those dollars, and do a Shark Tank-type initiative as part of the budgeting process to say, these dollars, we need your help in to figure out what can we do to help drive success of the district? And I do believe that would engage people into the process maybe then, more than in the past.
Let me insert my comment before I lose it, but I think I agree that our budget process needs to be different, okay? But I think each of us has a wish list, and I think one of the roles that I see as our, from our treasurer, is that she tries to balance the wish list. We have wish lists, the schools have wish lists, you know, our community has wish lists, we have obligations, there's fixed costs, and a lot of times, and not a lot of we have obligations, there's fixed costs, and a lot of times, and not a lot of times, all the time, the budget is perceived as a moving target, so to speak, that we can manipulate it. Now, I'm saying that because I think it's important for us to have this conversation, but I also think it's important for us to understand that we don't really have as much money to spend as we think we do. So I, I found helpful, and I, I believe it was the old Committee as a whole, one time when you did a budget presentation, and you laid out the full chart, and everybody started picking that chart away. I don't know if you remember that. Do some of you all remember that? Come on, I know you remember. You remember that. And so we need to, I know for me, and I'm not a bean counter or anything, it's hard for me to see. I like that because it helped me see kind of where our fixed costs are, which, where our budget can be more flexible, what kinds of things, looking at everybody's wish list. Because, I mean, I just happen to be sitting here looking at Ms. Copeland-Dansby, and it is, what are we spending on this, what are we spending on that? And so it might be helpful to have that kind of view as to which pots are more where our wish list, because when something comes up, we have to, where we have to try to find the money to spend it, I mean, to, to pay for something. Then for me, it's, so which pot, and, you know. And now, I don't, I can't remember who had their hand up. Mr. Marasky, then Mr. Messer?
Well, if we're going to talk about priorities, I'd like to see, I'll just say, any social, emotional learning initiatives. But I wanted to piggyback off something Mr. Messer said, that then President Jones also spoke to a little bit. If we break out all the dollars on fixed costs and can see what kind of discretionary dollars exist, I think it not only would be helpful for us in the, the sort of meat potatoes part of our elected duties, which to echo Member Bolton, is the single most important thing we've been elected to do, is be good stewards of these dollars for kids. But I think it would also politically help to write our narrative when we go to the taxpayer three years in a row, starting next year, for these emergency levy renewals, to, to be able to say, to have numbers. And if we invite more people in and we open the doors, and people see like, oh, they don't have as much money as we thought once everything is gone. I think it not only helps us to be better stewards, but it does, again, I think it helps us write our narrative and be in charge of our own destiny better going forward, and not allow people to sort of hijack narratives that they may not have as much information about. So, and then one last thing, like we were talking about with the teachers, and identifying teachers on, early, early on, that may want to go on and further in their career, regarding like the Shark Tank idea. I don't know about Shark Tanks, but I do know that there are some programs that have tremendous promise that maybe have been at salemates for two or three years because of additional funding. And we know where these programs are, and so I think that's another opportunity that we could invest more wisely, again, if we break down all these buckets.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I, I wanted to, you know, I don't, not that I think the Finance Committee would ever take this process over. I do think that as we have projects that come up, or people have ideas on programs and that type of thing, I do believe it should be part of protocol, that it should go to Finance Committee to do a financial analysis. Because then when it comes to the board, you're considering the idea, not just, that's a smart idea, but this is what that idea would entail. These are the types of dollars, because the work has been done, and then it can, and you can have true conversations that then entail trade-offs when necessary. But I do believe that there should be a process where things are referred to Finance Committee. You know, if it's going through a committee, it should go then over to Finance Committee for a financial review before it come to the committee, and I do think there's a, or before the full board. And I do think that there's a role in helping to vet the budget for the greater board by utilizing the Finance Committee. I think there's capacity in that committee. I think there's great value in using the additional time that we would have in those committees outside of this full group to help us have a more complete understanding of the dollars that we're looking to spend.
Ms. Bolton?
I think we have done a couple of things. We do now have a lot of transparency regarding what's being spent for what, and it's open to the community, and I, I'm not sure how many board members have actually investigated what we've put up on the website, because there's a lot of specificity there, and it's very transparent. And so I think we should probably be trained a little bit better to, to be able to look at that as a, as a board. And I think you're right, the vast majority of the dollars we spend are not necessarily discretionary, any more than the federal budget is, because it's committed. But I, I also want to say that we, we have done, and the Treasurers invest, you know, invented something where we add money and we take money away, and we had a community group come in and look at it and help us make decisions. We've done where there's a, we, you have, you know, $50 million that might be discretionary, and then we had the community do that. Or we've had surveys out, what's your priorities? So we've done that kind of thing. We've done a number of different things. It's just that we don't necessarily do it in a way that is revelatory every year. And, and you're right, we don't really have a budget process. We have an internal one, but we don't necessarily have a, it's more of a, a business kind of plan. So I, I think, I think there's many ways that we could improve upon this, and I do think it's a wish list. Our budget reflects, or should reflect, our priorities. That's all budgets do. It shouldn't necessarily reflect only the administration's priorities. And the administration tries to understand what we want by our vision and mission and all that good stuff. But again, like everything else, one of the reasons we at least used to get until the last three months, bad, bad grades on engagement, is that the places where we're supposed to be engaging the public, we don't. We haven't. Whether it's about curriculum, to your point, where we're supposed to be representing community values, or if it's a budget hearing that doesn't happen, or, or whatever. So I mean, I think it would be great for us to, now that our new Superintendent is no longer new, and she's got basically a year under her belt, we've got an experienced Treasurer, we get, they work well together, they're both strategic thinkers, it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to spend some time as to what do we really want to see in next year's budget effort.
I, I think our, I believe that our budget should align in terms of cost and, and the priorities. That, you know, so it can't be, we have different, the board has different priorities around things, you know? Like I said, people have wish lists of things. And yeah, maybe we do need to take a look, see where they lie in our strategic focus, you know, which I believe is wonderful, and I believe we spend a lot of money on that, and, and there's value to that. But our, our priorities should not be different. We, you know, we're going to work on our budget retreat goals, and there should be alignment. And an important thing to ask is, what does this cost us already? I mean, you know, it shouldn't be any additional cost on top of what's already being done. That's kind of a point that I wanted to make, yes.
Along that same line, what we, I think they're working on, and it's gotten better, I think, is from a standpoint of it needs to be aligned, every dollar needs to be aligned to what it is we're trying to accomplish. And 11 years ago, there was no alignment. We weren't even sure how much money there was anywhere. I mean, it was very difficult. So it's, it's alignment about student growth, it's alignment to the vision, the mission, Superintendent's strategies, or whatever, but there, there are books that even give you an idea as to how you align the dollars to student achievement and growth. How do you align, and very frankly, our opportune time is with this equity policy. Because with this equity policy, specifically equity says you are, you are deliberately granting funds and resources and time where it is most needed. And so it isn't, it's just like I say, it isn't, it isn't everything being equal, which is, our first start always is the CFT contract, which unfortunately has one equation that fits all. Well, that, it doesn't, but we have to make it fit that way.
Yeah. Mr. Messer?
So just building on that, I mean, I think, yes, it's the dollars, but it's the programs those dollars are funding that then result in the outcomes. So that's why I think you have to start with those plans. What are the goals? And, you know, what are the measures and metrics that those programs will produce? And then it's, then an understanding of the investment required to achieve those metrics. And so that's why I think if we start with a true business planning process, where these are our key areas of focus, well, first of all, here's the much more reduced, these are the variable dollars that we have on the table here, and here are the priorities that have been declared. And then here are the programs and the strategies and tactics that will help us get there, and the metrics and measures that we hope to achieve. And then I think it's a financial analysis on what each of those will cost, and then you have the trade-off conversation. So, I mean, I, I think there is a way for this board to really engage in the, the business planning process, and then engage the, the Finance Committee to work with the Treasurer to come back with an analysis of, here are the true costs on what has been laid out by the administration, some of these other ideas brought to the table, and then, you know, have the, the, the dollar conversation that's based on a, a true assessment of what the programs and, and initiatives are being proposed.
Other comments?
I think the intention tonight was to put it out on the table so our Treasurer can hear kind of what some of the concerns were. I remember the, when Superintendent Mitchell did the, the report, we had a lot more, we're talking here sort of systemic and organizational stuff, you know, real high-level stuff. But I but remember at that time, people were talking about what they saw as their wish list. And so we didn't get as much of that tonight, which is okay, because I think in whatever process we, you know, will, that will come up. And, but, you know, we have to give Treasurer Wagner an opportunity to respond. That's not tonight, but just as food for thought, and then maybe we can have another discussion very soon, and to talk just very globally again, before we start putting the pieces together and acting on it. Ms. Bolton?
Just one, just, just one thing too. It's, it really isn't the Treasurer's budget. It's the Superintendent's budget. And so it's, and that's a, that, that needs to be clear, but the, the Treasurer's the one that tends to have some of the, the answers that we, you know, can want to, to hear. I do worry only, but I don't, I seldom disagree with what you said, but I hate, I hate that wish list. It diminishes it. My wish list is well within the vision and the mission and what I hear in student achievement, or what I've watched. And I don't, I know you don't, I, you don't want to diminish it. It is, it's, it's any more than the Superintendent has wish lists. It's what we think would be needed, or whatever.
Well, it's, it's a, maybe it's a bad word for priorities. What are priorities?
There you go, there you go.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, so I'd like to propose an idea that I do believe after the presentation that we had, you know, because we, yes, we can sit and debate what next year's process could look like, and if it should be, maybe it makes its way through some committees as part of the annual planning process. I think there's a variety of ways we could do that. This year, though, as we've had the initial presentation, I think all of us probably took copious notes on questions and ideas and things that were in there, and as it is a budget presentation, one idea would be to have those, not to put work on the, the Finance Committee, but have those kind of be collected by the members of the Finance Committee, and then reviewed, discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, and then allow that kind of analysis to be done there, and then come back to the board with a response on those items, so that we can have a process for discussion, getting those to the administration, et cetera, and then kind of having the, the conversation on what the outcome was back to the board at the next meeting.
Right.
Or the meeting after the next Finance Committee.
You will have to change the bylaws of the, of the board, because currently, the Finance Committee doesn't have that responsibility. Which is fine, you know, God knows, we've done that before. But that does represent a departure, and I'm not sure what Finance Committee would know based upon what's necessarily gone through policy as to what's needed. And that, see, that's why it does get to be a full-board thing. Student achievement may be, like, we're really working on this, and we need, we want this to happen, and send it to Finance, and then Finance, well, that's really a stupid idea, or no, we don't have money for it. Well, wait, it has to come back to the full board. I think this opened, this is exciting right now, as, as much as I, we all want to go home, because we had a short agenda, but the reality is, this is, this is full board.
So.
Well, I, and what I like about what you said, Mr. Messer, is it does give us, I like the word framework. You know, we, we're, we're saying it's a lot of subject matter coming out here, and I don't want to freak Superintendent Mitchell out or Treasurer Wagner, but I do think that there's a way that we can gather information so that it makes sense in, in some kind of way. And I don't know if that's financial or whatever, but maybe it's here, I don't know.
We, we left the last time we talked about budget, that we were all to submit to Board staff, or to the Superintendent or Treasurer. We might look at the minutes from the board meeting, whatever questions we had.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
Yeah, whatever question, if I would, and so there would be one, and when we individually submit something, it should go, we should all be copied on it, so we are not, you know, they have to respond to seven different people, whatever, so. But I do know we left it with, we were either going to funnel it through Ms. Davis, or send it directly to, I think it was directly to the Superintendent. I kind of remember her.
So right there, so the, right there, I think already is very confusing to me. If people are sending things over as part of this process, I, I think I'll have to go back and review, but I don't know why the, the Finance Committee couldn't have conversations related to financial implications of proposed ideas or programs. So if that is, I think we should change that, if we can't talk about financial things at the Finance Committee. But it wouldn't be that that committee determines whether or not they come out. I think it gives a place to have things vetted, pressure-tested, et cetera, to then come back to the board to then make decisions on. And if there's financial analysis, that committee could say, can we dig deeper in that? So what would that specifically cost? Or what would the costs be associated with that? Great. When that goes to the board as kind of our, then conversations on trade-offs, I'd like to have a dollar amount attached to those, those components. So I would never use the Finance Committee as a, a gate of anything to come to the board, but yet utilize it as an opportunity to ensure that what then comes back to the board is something we can actually make a decision on.
Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Marasky.
With all due respect, that sounds like we're moving into management rather than governance. And when we have, say, the, I guess we're moving towards a...
City Council model?
Not a City Council model. Okay, the, the minority recruitment program. I mean, that shouldn't come to finance for, okay, how much is it going to, that's something that Jen would look at and say, okay, we have X amount in this budget, and X amount in this budget, and maybe we can get a grant here, and maybe we can get a grant there, and then figure it out that way. I do think that we are kind of moving into a managerial function with Mr. Messer's suggestion. And Lord knows, our meetings have been running close to two hours now anyway. If we started getting in the weeds with, how much is this going to cost, and what about this program and this program? I mean, I, I just think that, that's too, that's not our role. Our role is, you know, governance and oversight, not determining how much programs cost and where they fit.
Right. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Marasky?
Yeah, I just, in listening to all this, it just seems to me that, you know, we've been talking a lot about process, and how there wasn't really maybe necessarily a real process. The process seems to, what, Mr. Messer, what you said in your last comment regarding of what you foresaw... of what you foresaw perhaps happening in finance, to me, that sounds like what the budget retreat should be. It wasn't, and that's fine, and perhaps that's what it can be in the future now that we're having these conversations here, because I feel like it should be full-board as well. But I feel like that the way you describe, what you just described, should happen here in front of everybody and would be like essentially the budget retreat, as opposed to a presentation and then email questions to somebody, which is not very efficient. And I actually like the way we've been operating. The term "wish list" kind of rubbed to me differently, too, but even priorities, I think we're supposed to be on this high level. I think actually the conversation we're having is super appropriate. But then getting down into those weeds and these allocations, appropriations, whatever you want to call them, would happen here at a budget retreat perhaps, and it would have to be a really long meeting.
Mr. Messer.
Yeah, I just feel like I need to clarify there. What I'm trying to not have is I think it's, it's not a good process if people are offering, not pet projects, but priorities, whatnot. I think that should come here, and then they get handed to someone in the administration, because you never know who's going to be sitting in these other seats and things could be coming in. And if I were on the receiving end of that, the administration, I'm like, good Lord, you know, all these things coming in here. And then maybe half the board doesn't even think that should have been thrown over the fence. So I think there has to, and I was trying to use the finance committee as kind of a way to pull this together so the board can make collective decision on, is this something we want to send over and ask the administration to do? Not that we would get in the weeds of X, Y, and Z, but it's to help us get to a process where what we are doing is done with this board and nothing's kind of being done where we have no idea that these things were sent over to somebody, the administration.
Right. So for the sake of moving on, because it is 8:30, and we thought this would be a fairly short meeting, but what I'm hearing consistently is concerns about the process and the transparency of the process and how we gather information. I heard people like the idea of full-board discussion. So one way to address this is, number one, keep it full-board discussion. We pull our information together. Ms. Davis will, can send out a draft of the responses and the discussion for board members. We can put it on the agenda. We really do need to try to frame it somehow so that it makes sense. And so any one of us can volunteer to do that and make sure we include Superintendent Mitchell and Treasurer Wagner in case they want to add to it, but bring it back for full-board discussion. Rather, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we need to keep taking a deeper dive into it until we can come up with a product that says, huh, this is what we have. Now we know clearly how we move forward. So it's no decision tonight. It is pulling all the information, the notes and stuff together.
And I would say we've gotten more information this year than we did last year. And I would say that we have a better understanding of priorities from the administration instead of just incremental increases here and there or whatever. So I have a sense that we're moving in the right direction, and I feel better about it than I have in the past, because I think there's a commitment to transparency. But I do think the president of the board ought to make sure we have about two more times to talk as a board about budget and to be able to express the priorities. I mean, the superintendent and the treasurer got our priorities from our January retreat. On that chart, they have that list, and they know where to focus there, but then within those broader, that broader scope, there's some specifics, too, than many of which they are addressing.
Okay. Other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Great. Does anyone have any kudos, except other than me? Yes, Mr. Messer.
As was mentioned earlier, the superintendent met with the CANS parents, and I just wanted to send my kudos there, because, you know, I saw a group of people completely inspired after hearing from our superintendent. I also heard our superintendent be very clear that we need to do better in diversifying that group, so it was representative of the children that will be attending that school. And she did it in such a way that, of course, it's exactly what they wanted to do. And, you know, it was almost kind of this sigh of relief when she then laid out, it's time for the district to start taking on the heavy lifting to make sure that that school opens and opens in the way that our community has asked that to be done. So kudos to our superintendent. And then also, I want to thank a couple of teachers, Rick Hand and Lori Wyant, whose spring musical at SCPA was called "Labelless," with bullying, racism, and classism as the topics addressed. And clearly today, more than ever, these are issues that our children face. So not only did they do a couple of presentations of that show, but also did daytime presentations for students that further drives this positive school culture. And I think it's important to thank the teachers who create these opportunities, but also meaningful opportunities that help move our students and our communities forward. So a special shout-out to Rick Hand and Lori Wyant.
Thank you. Before I give my kudos, Mr. Timmons, can you kind of talk a little bit about the ABC event? That you danced that?
Well, it was all about Chris Nels. His wife, she didn't really want to come up and do a little presentation or whatever, so they asked me. And I just talked about the fact that I met Chris when we were both juniors and seniors in high school, playing baseball against each other. Also, we ended up going to Central State, going to college together, going in together and then coming out, graduating together, and then coming down here and be a part of Cincinnati Public Schools. Him being a coach at Hughes with the baseball team, and myself with the basketball team at Western Hills and Woodward. And, yeah, we did talk about the fact that we used to have, you know, good times at the parties and all that good stuff. So it was fun. It was fun. It was fun.
And just to piggyback on that, just wanted to give kudos to some of our CPS Hall of Famers, a lot of them, I don't know, but quite a few akin, like coaches and some of the older coaches and what have you. Mary Danner Weinberg, did I say her name? Is it Danner? Mary Danner, the track star.
Track girl.
Yeah, she currently teaches at Kilgore, but she was inducted into the Hall of Fame. She looks like a runner, I can tell you that. So she was inducted.
Chip Jones.
Yeah, quite a few people, I mean, we could just name all of them. I was real pleased, and I think Melanie will be happy to hear this, there were two women, not one, but two. So that was good. That's a.
And we're moving on up, aren't we?
Yeah, we're moving up. So then a couple of other kudos. Here, Withrow Senior, Jelia Smith has, she's a track star at Withrow, winning high jump, she won the high jump last year, so I can't find where she placed this year, but she's a two-time state champion in the 300 hurdles. So kudos to her, and kudos to Hughes. Seniors Tameya Perkins and Tyraja Brown for the four-by-100 relay. They took fourth place. So congratulations to those two young ladies. And then sports awards, TriHealth Sports Awards. We have several young people, Garrett Banks from Walnut Hills. We have Jolinda, Garrett Banks won the I Am Sport Award. Then we have Jolinda Miller from Hughes, Athletic Director of the Year, Hard and Hustle Award, Ronnie Hughes, Ronnie Harris from Hughes, Leslie Tank Sanders, and Gregory G.B. Marsh Jr. from West High. So congratulations to all of our folks.
Also, I have kudos as well. Cameron Gibson, Walnut Hills, will be attending Western Carolina University on a Basketball Scholarship.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you to all of our honorees. So.
Kudos.
Kudos, Mr. Morosky.
Kudos. I want to give a couple more kudos to the SCPA kids at Labelless. When I went and saw it, I was like crocodile tears, it was so moving. But I think it's good for folks to know that not only did they perform awesome in their building this past Friday, I was at Camp Joy's Gala, I'm on their board, and the cast of Labelless was there, helping with the entire night. They did a performance from one of the songs, and I just, I was super, super, super impressed with, there were probably 40 to 50 teenagers from SCPA that were there the whole night that really made the entire event go, and they performed, and they just represented the district really, really, really well. So I just wanted everyone to know that we were wrapped very well by the students, and I tried not to embarrass us when I danced at the event.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present any retirements.
Yes, I have two educators to recognize. Jenna L. Calvin and George M. Shore are retiring. They're of our certificated personnel, so we wish them well and thank them for their service to our children.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any requests hearing of the public, so we'll move on. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do, I have a very short report. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that today was scheduled a field dedication in honor of former board member Chris Nels. It was rained out, and so therefore that will be rescheduled until Thursday, April the 26th at 3:30. In addition, we did host a first girls-to-women SHIRO event, and so we had our young ladies from our high schools who were able to attend a luncheon last year and be recognized for their outstanding work and leadership within their schools. They received a myriad of gifts and acknowledgements and a really beautiful stole that they will be wearing with their cap and gown during graduation for those graduating seniors. We did also give out an award for a SHIRO, and Anna Iris Ellis from Woodward actually received an award for her leadership throughout this school year, so we're very excited about that. In addition, we had a game at the Red Stadium. It was very exciting. West High was able to play Walnut Hills, and I'm not really sure how, but somebody convinced me to do the first pitch. It did make it. It was straight. It took a no dive into the dirt, but it did make it into the dirt, so I'm very happy to say that. My husband's only comment was, you did this in stilettos? And I said, by, yes, I did that in stilettos. So it was fun. Yeah, it was fun. Bon Hill will be celebrating a Earth Day on this coming Friday at Bright Farms, so it's tied to their program focus, so we're very excited about that as well. And then we'd like to be able to show you a very short video that highlights the work that is taking place with Belcan and Cyber Security Program at Taft Information Technology
As online technologies continue to evolve and cyber criminals become more sophisticated in their methods and approaches, cybersecurity is rapidly becoming a top global priority. With an unemployment rate of zero and over 348,000 open positions, cybersecurity is one of the fastest-growing professions in the world. It is crucial that governments and businesses have access to a pool of skilled cybersecurity professionals in order to keep themselves, their employees, and their clients safe. This is where the Cincinnati Public School CPS Cyber Academy comes in. CPS's Cyber Academy gives high school students a head start in learning and acquiring valuable cybersecurity skills. Students who complete the program will have key cyber industry certifications and be eligible for government clearance. Cyber Academy is a three-year curriculum, beginning sophomore year, with foundational coursework focused on information and cybersecurity. The CPS Cyber Academy initiative will give program participants a head start in learning and acquiring valuable cyber skills while offering the opportunity to obtain high-paying jobs upon completion of the program. As said by Superintendent Laura Mitchell, "The true measure of our success at Cincinnati Public Schools is determined by whether the students we serve are prepared to leave our classrooms, enter the job world, earn a decent living for themselves and their families, and contribute to our society in meaningful ways." Cincinnati Public Schools, Belcan, and Lead Tribune will partner with the SANS Institute to deploy the new SANS Cyber Start game as part of an exciting new CPS program to identify young people with cyber talent. Cyber Start is a suite of online challenges, tools, and games that aims to inspire the next generation of cybersecurity professionals. It is an interactive program that applies gamification principles and game design techniques to introduce young people to cybersecurity. Our hope at CPS is that this program will change how high school students view cybersecurity and prepare them for one of the most sought-after skill sets globally. With a cybersecurity job shortage on the horizon, CPS is committed to finding ways to introduce young people to the field of cybersecurity, develop their interest, and helping them to pursue careers in the sector. Through Cyber Academy, including SANS Cyber Start, CPS is committed to delivering on our purpose, preparing our students for successful acclimation into exciting and financially
So we would like to acknowledge board member Bolton, who actually brought this idea to us over a year ago, and it was visionary, and we were not really sure that it could be pulled off, and a year later, here it is. And so thank you to our board member, thank you to Belcan, and also to Lead Magazine for bringing this to our district and making it possible. We're very excited.
I think there might be one more announcement, our winner.
I am so sorry. I do have one more announcement. Thank you. Also, I'd like to acknowledge that the 2018 School Nutrition Association of Ohio Most Valuable Administrator Award was given to Bill Mooreing. This is a very competitive award that recognizes only one school district administrator in the state of Ohio for their dedication to supporting the success of children nutrition, child nutrition and programs in the district. The award ceremony will be held in June, and Bill was nominated by Jessica Shelley. So congratulations, Bill.
Congratulations. Yep. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner, do you have a report? Just the report that's submitted for approval. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No move.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Ms., yes, Ms. Bolton?
I have just a question on page two, and, let's see, it's about the amount of money regarding Lighthouse Youth Services. That isn't the Lighthouse School, that's the Lighthouse Services, correct?
Correct.
And I'm interested in knowing how many students that serves? I mean, it.
Honestly, I don't, I would have to check. I don't know. I have a question also. Ms. Bolton's question was, is it for the students in the Lighthouse Community School? So if it's not that, then what is that amount used for?
Individual aid tutoring and student behavior.
Okay.
For students in our district that are served by our Department of Student Services, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. Motion seconded. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
I recuse vote on that particular item. We have several items this evening under inquiries and updates. We'll try to run through this quickly. I'm sorry.
Just point of clarity, you are with the whole Treasurer's report or just that one item?
That item.
Okay.
That one item.
Thank you.
And just to explain, they receive funding from the agency that I work for, and if it was the school, because that's not where their funding come from, I would have voted on that. Thank you. Okay, so want to bring to the attention of the board the resolution that was submitted by Gulf Manor in support of our safety in gun violence. Mr. Morosky, you want to talk about that?
Well, as you know in policy, Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton and myself got to a resolution we were all happy with. This board approved it, and then we asked that all governing bodies within our district pass resolutions in support of what we said, and Gulf Manor was the very first to do so, which is great. So we're still waiting on the city of Cincinnati. Still waiting.
It's been busy.
Still waiting. And then, of course, that would also be Chiviet, I guess, Green Township. Amberly and Silverton. Yeah. But yeah, go Gulf Manor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just an update on the ACES meeting. We confirmed finally the date and the time, June 5th, as you all said, June 5th, 5:00 to 6:30. Now, location, Alita is going to get back to me tomorrow. We've been going back and forth because they're supposed to be hosting it, but they wanted to, I think they want to come here. So once I get that confirmed, I'll send that out to folks or have Ms. Davis send it out so you can get it confirmed. But the date is June 5th, 5:00 to 6:30, and we need agenda items. And I have a couple of them tonight, so we'll add those to the agenda. Okay. Ms. Bolton, you have the next item when you're ready. House Bill 591?
Yes, 591. This is a follow-up, if you'll recall, from our legislative breakfast that we had over at Dater, and we were asking about different legislative activities. And one of the ones that we brought up was one that I think we heard from the Urban Network for OSBA, and it's a House Bill 591. And it deals with the first major, or at least the most recent, attempt to reshape and retool and reinvent the report card. And there's many, many things in this that are, I think, better for us, significantly better. There are things that we, if we pressured and lobbied a bit, we could get changed to make it better for us. But my hope is that, I think everybody got a copy of the summary for 591, and if you look at it, it's a tremendous improvement for us, and it also is in part kind of a better way, the great emphasis is on reshaping it, because nobody can explain the current one. And federal law only requires that results be posted, not all this aftermath that ODE does and trying to do a bunch of different things to figure things out. So I would, when we get to the assignments, besides this discussion we might have about this, I would hope that the administration would take a good look at it because it's moving very quickly, according to the state school board. And if you'll notice, both, not only the person that introduced it, Mr. Duffy, but we have our own Mr. Seitz, who is a close, personal friend of this district, who is, you know, pretty conservative, but we have a direct line in whatever we would want to try to influence it to be changed because he is a co-sponsor. So it looks much better for us than, and I'd be interested to hear what the administration has to say about it, and I would really like to empower them and whoever else to reach out and shape it even better and get that to the people that are making the decision or even be willing to testify on behalf of it because they might be trying to do this fairly soon. And you've already, our administration's already positioned us to do well in some of these places already. So I just would, if it would serve the chair, I'd like to hear what the administration has to say about it.
Thank you. Written procedures on board site?
She's going to tell us.
Oh, she's going to tell us now. I'm sorry. I thought you were putting it as an assignment. I'm sorry.
I can do follow-up as well, but I did thoroughly read the House Bill, highlighted, color-coded it. So this, the summary really outlines the doing away with letter grades there on the report card. There would be some specific modifications made to career tech as well, and there would be a focus on raw scores. This also highlights there would really only be seven measures. One would be the state results, graduation, growth, gap closing, third grade guarantee, college and career readiness, and enrichment and support measures. There would also continue to be a reporting of subgroups, and the reason that's important is because the suburban districts need to be held to the same level of accountability that we do. And so if you lower the subgroup number too low, then their population doesn't show up in this report, and so that's important as well. This, we are ahead in many areas. This really looks at students a year after graduation, whether they're employed or enrolled or enlisted. And so there are many components that are components that we are already seriously working on within our district. I did forward this information to all the assistant superintendents and asked them to review it carefully to, for their consideration. In addition, we do have a list of members who are serving on advisory committee that was forwarded to us by Board Member Bolton through Pat Brunt, who serves on the state board, and I've already given that information to Assistant Superintendent Ahmad to see how we might be able to have our voice included in that committee work. There's one person from Cincinnati who's on that committee, and that person is being represented by CFT, and so we're very much interested in getting our name and our voices out there, and so more to come on this. But we have looked at it, have considered the consequences, and it is a lot improved over the current report card system.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Bates, you want to do the next one? Written procedures on board website?
Oh, that is, that will happen.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Messer, Finance Committee review of new programs and policy proposals?
Uh, I agree.
We did? Great. Okay.
I think it's time one.
Okay.
I think it'll be solved once we get it to the...
Sorry. I think it'll be solved once we collectively develop a process for the budget process going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Other inquiries and updates? Okay. Assignments? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I will assign to the administration the outreach for applications to serve on our new charter, newly chartered committee of, what did we?
SPEC.
SPEC.
Strategic.
Oh, we all like that.
It's terrible.
We, SPEC. We're going to call it SPEC. Let's add "at" in there, okay? Let's call it the SPEC Committee and model the application process after the process to, for appointment to our audit committee for community members and extend the tenure beginning June 1st. Is that a good goal?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Other assignments? Mr. Morosky?
This may be understood, but I just want to make it explicit that we'll assign to the Finance Committee to mock up the resolution to oppose House Bill 512. I mean, again, it's probably understood because we approved the minutes, but that's in that next board meeting, we can vote on that resolution.
Thank you. Other assignments? Ms. Bolton? I'm sorry.
I'm just the follow-up regarding 591, which it sounds like the administration's deep in the throes of doing, but to assign to the administration to finish review and make recommendations for improvement and support of various parts of 591 and to make contact note with our lobbyists, but also maybe some kind of direct contact as a follow-up from our legislative breakfast between the Superintendent and at least Mr. Seitz about where we are on this and start that dialogue as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, this was just a kind of a request for the board partners to aggregate the board feedback on the budget process to share with the rest of the board what has been communicated.
And I'd like to add to his assignment. Could you make sure, even though we have Ms. Copeland-Dansby's information, Ms. Davis, can you make sure that hers is included in that? Okay. All right. Any other inquiries and updates? Or assignments? I'm sorry. It's getting late. Okay. Any other assignments? Okay. Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Oh, let me show you this. Let me show you.
Oh, you got the picture?